Good evening out everyone, welcome to the January, excuse me while I put my readers on, January 11th School Committee Meeting for the Greenfield Public Schools. Typically, the Chair opens in the meeting and goes through the agenda and at this point, because there is no elected Chair, the person with the most tenure runs the meeting until that is determined, excuse me. So to start this evening, I am going to do a roll call and we will move on to election of officers from there, at which point Superintendent DeBarge will take over. Member Denis.
Here.
Myself, I am here, Member Johnson Musad.
Here.
Member Martini.
Here.
Chair Prayety, uh, Member Prayety, excuse me.
Here.
Member Wall.
Here.
Mayor Weidergartner.
Here.
We are all here and clearly have a quorum. Superintendent DeBarge, if you would take it away, please, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, I am opening the floor for nominations for Chair.
I would like to make a motion to change the agenda. Public comment should be first, it has always been first.
I'm sorry you need to be recognized by the ranking member at this point. Member Denis, please do go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to change the agenda, public comment should be first, it has always been first.
And is there a second?
Second.
With the second, we are open for discussion. Members Denis, would you like to make a comment?
Um, I'd like to know why the procedure was changed and how changing the placement of public comment makes us a better school committee. It has always come before the election of officers and by not allowing public comment to come first, we are disenfranchising our school community.
Okay, anyone else like to make a comment? Member Prayety.
Thank you. I have heard this feedback now since the last, the meeting in December and I did due diligence to see what had actually transpired and I looked at 2020, 2021, and 2022, the organizational meetings in January of each of those years on the agenda, public comment does appear before the reorganization with the exception of 2022, but if you look at the minutes, we each time reorganized the agenda to have the reorganization and election of officers come before public comment. So that is not an accurate statement by Member Denis.
Anyone else? Member Johnson Musad.
I think maybe looking at the principle of the question may be useful, so we have an agenda that includes public comment. The purpose of it is to allow the comment to public to, to make comment on items of concern about how their tax dollars are being spent in the schools, what's happening for the benefit of the students. The election of officers is one of the most important decisions we make all year. It really changes the tone of these meetings, it changes what's on the agenda, literally. So I think having public comment before we deliberate about who will be our officers seems very much in the public interest to have a chance to do, for the public to get to do before we make our votes.
Member Martini.
I was also interested in this question since it came up and I thought of looking into how this issue is approached by other governmental bodies in the area and my, to my research here, it appears that in other school districts and, and bodies such as City Council, there seems to be a consistent effort made to always put public comment before any actual voting item takes place. So for example, in Mohawk Pioneer in Northampton, public comment seems to be the first item on every agenda and in others such as Frontier and Greenfield's own City Council, public comment seems to take place after reports from certain individuals but before any actual voting item takes place. And the only outlier I really saw was Gil Montague who seems to have an executive session as the first item on every agenda and I'm not really sure why, but they do place public comment before any regular business on their agenda after that. So I appreciate the kind of democratic principle behind giving the public the opportunity to comment on any voting item on any agenda, which they won't have the opportunity to do if we vote on something before public comment. So, and maybe nobody is here to talk about the reorganization of the school committee, but maybe they are and we won't really know that unless we give them the opportunity to speak first and it seems like kind of a small change that we should probably make.
Member Prayety.
I'm always interested in making sure that we do things correctly and when I review our policy on the organizational meeting, it clearly states that at the end of the policy following election of officers, at its organizational meeting, the school committee may proceed into such regular or special business as selected on the agenda, as scheduled on the agenda, sorry. Public comment is business of the school committee and I had an exchange with Member Denis earlier in the week over email where she said, "We really just sit there during public comment, we don't do anything." And for an officer, and that couldn't be further from the truth in terms of what we actually do. We are working with the recording secretary to make sure there's order to who is called on and no one is left out. We are making sure folks do what is required by law, which is state where their name and where they're from. We are timing their comments and in some cases, we do have to be prepared to address when someone might make a comment that isn't allowed. For example, if someone comes to complain about personnel from the school district, that is absolutely not allowed in public comment and someone would need to intervene. If we do not have officers and if we select, if we choose, we vote and choose to put public comment first, we also need to have someone from the school committee who is going to run public comment and we need to vote and/or agree on who that person will be for us.
Uh, I didn't see who was first, Elizabeth, your mic is on, Member Johnson Musad, is that acceptable?
Okay.
What Member Prayety is saying is absolutely inaccurate, that is not what I said in my email. In my email, I did not say that we didn't do anything when public comment came about. I said that because we sit here and absorb what is told to us and do not interact with what the public is saying, which we can't, I'm sorry, that it could very easily be run by the person here, Susan, Member Ekstrom, who is the designee, who is the one with the longest tenure, can easily run the public comment section and we absolutely should vote on whether or not that we put it first and we should vote on whether or not Member Ekstrom should run it. There's nothing wrong with voting about this. I do not understand why you're so set against doing this unless it is specifically to try to exploit some gray area to advance your own point of view. That's how it seems to me.
Member Johnson Musad.
Uh, just hearing, uh, Member Prayety's concern about needing to have a facilitator for public comment, I'm wondering, Member Denis, if you would accept a friendly amendment to include allowing Susan Ekstrom to continue to facilitate the meeting during public comment, since we won't be doing the organization first by your amendment?
Absolutely.
That's okay. Glenn, you seconded that motion, I believe?
Yep, that was me.
And so you're, you're welcome in that friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment that I made, yep.
Susan Farber, can you read it back to us so we can all hear it in full? I actually do have some comment that I want to make, but I want, want everyone to be clear on what it is we're discussing and what the motion is.
The motion is to change the agenda to allow public comment to be first and to allow Susan Ekstrom to continue to facilitate the meeting during public comment.
Thank you. We all agree that yes, that is the motion? Member Wall.
I would like to point out that the City Council does not have public comment at their reorganizational meeting. We have a counselor here who can attest to that.
And there's Penny being put on the spot. I actually, Glenn, I absolutely will call on you, but I'd like to make a comment first just because I haven't yet. Much like Member Martini, I sort of dive into data and when I saw the requests and the questions that were coming to us, I did take some time to look around. And yes, there are school committees that have public comment prior to reorganization and, but what I also thought about was how we are associated with the City of Greenfield and our school committee isn't necessarily, isn't run necessarily based on how other school committees do things, but based on the charter. And I did notice that the City Council does not have public comment prior to reorganization. And so because of that and because of the policy, because I do like to refer to policy, that's where I'm leaning more towards, but it isn't for any other reason other than that. And we do have a motion on the table and we'll have to vote, I just wanted you all to hear what my thoughts were. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, Member Johnson Musad, you had your hand raised?
I was just curious, when the City Council meets for organization meetings, is that, are there other items on the agenda or is that the only item?
I can pull it up quick on my phone if you'd like, but I think that was the only item on that one.
My brief review said not usually, but I'm not an expert, I wouldn't like, yeah. This year, I don't believe there was anything else on your agenda except the reorg-
TV, I can say most of the time, there was no other agenda. They do have community chairs meeting afterward, but there's nothing on the TV or anything.
Thank you, sir.
So we're, I mean, if we're, we can't really, I don't think that we can say, well, we couldn't possibly have public comment at our meeting before our organizational component because we're following the precedent set by City Council when City Council had organized, has organizational meetings where that's the only item on the agenda. So maybe they should, I believe that maybe they should have public comment at their organizational meetings because people, members of the public may want to weigh in on who their City Council president is, but, but on this agenda, we do have public comment, we have members of the public here, ready to speak, why not let them talk?
At this point, I'd like to call the question unless there are any more comments? Are we ready to call the question? We're all, do I have to do it in person or can we do raise hands? Are all those in favor of calling the question? Calling the question means it's time for us to vote on the motion, just for everyone. All those opposed? All those abstaining? I'm going to abstain just because I'm trying to remain neutral while I'm doing this thing.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So if you would-
I raise my hand, yes.
Yes, to, yes to ask the question.
To do the question.
Okay, so Susan, if you would read back the motion and we'll take a vote.
The motion is to change the agenda to allow public comment to be first and to allow Susan Ekstrom to continue to facilitate the meeting during public comment.
All those in favor? We have three in favor, all those opposed? All those abstaining? Then I'm at a stump.
The motion does not pass.
If we're abstaining, I'm unaware of that, I apologize. So we will move on to the designation or the election of officers. Superintendent DeBarge, if you would, please.
Okay. Open to getting nominations for Chair. Member Denis.
I would like to nominate Glenn Johnson Musad for Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations for, I apologize, any second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, that's Elizabeth and Kate second. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
I'd like to, I would like to nominate Amy Prayety for Chair.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations for Chair? Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for discussion. Any discussion? Member Denis.
Well, I'd like to say two things, but firstly, I would like to say why I would like to nominate Glenn Johnson Musad. Member Johnson Musad has exactly the skills that we need as a Chair. He is used to working with groups of people, he creates an environment of collaboration, of peace and calm, he sets great tones for meetings. I've had the pleasure of being part of the Policy and Program Subcommittee meetings where he has chaired and done an exceptional job. I've always felt heard, I've always felt an equal in the process and in a way, he has served as my mentor and I'm really thankful. The things that I have learned about the school committee that are positive have come from my time working alongside Glenn. So I think he would make an excellent Chair because I think that he will be able to and interested in bringing us all together as a group, which is something that does not exist now, this is a toxic environment and I think that he's the only person on this committee who can help to bridge that gap and get us back to the business of helping the children, which is what we're here to do. So I think he is the right choice, he's the best choice, we're here to vote on the best possible candidate and it is him.
Thank you. Any other comment, discussion? Member Ekstrom.
I'd actually like to speak on Member Prayety's behalf. I have had a front row seat to the activities that are involved in being Chair with having been Vice Chair to Amy's being Chair during pandemic, which was something I, even as Vice Chair, having lesser responsibility, I would never want to go through that again. I, I think that there is a lack of knowledge of things that a Chair does, just sort of in the general public. And unless you see it in person or up close, you don't understand sort of the time commitment that is involved with being Chair. And the, the position of Chair sets the tenor, absolutely, and there are times that have, could have gone better and there are times that could have gone vastly worse. I remember with Adrian being Chair, our meetings would go, honest to be, until 1:00 in the morning, which, let's face it, after 10, this person is almost done. And, and even with Adrian as Chair, who has a very different personality, it was not sort of this rainbows and unicorns environment then either. I think that it's okay to disagree, I don't think it's okay to be contentious and I think that as a group, we certainly have, have a ways to go, but I think that, in my personal opinion, there has been great strides made. I appreciate that Amy is able to keep us on task and keep the moving, the meeting moving. And, you know, I know that Amy is deeply invested in the community and I know that she is, spends a great deal of time doing things on our behalf that, that aren't necessarily public knowledge, not because they can't be, but because she doesn't have a need to promote herself. And so those are my reasons for thinking that Amy would continue to be wonderful Chair.
Thank you. Any other comment for discussion?
As, as I always say about elections, I'm just very appreciative of the body that we have a choice and I thank Member Johnson Musad for being willing to step in as Chair.
Member Denis.
I've thought really long and hard about this, I spend a lot of personal time pulling these thoughts together. I'd like to speak about why Amy is not the right choice to be Chair. It's not that I do not appreciate her work and it's not that I don't appreciate what she did in 2020, but I'm not interested in what it was like when Adrian was the Chair and I'm not interested in what it was like in 2020, I'm interested in what it's like now. Now is what I'm interested in and that's what I think that we need to focus on. And I'm sorry, Amy, but you lack the communication skills, organizational abilities, and interpersonal skills to create an environment of mutual trust and collaboration. The Chair is the servant of the Assembly and not its master and the Chair is responsible to the committee and not the other way around and I feel like that gets very lost when you chair meetings. You only have the authority granted to you by your colleagues and I feel that you ignore the strengths and interests of other members in order to favor your own point of view and this has kept us from being able to focus on the work of the committee. So I do not think that you are the right candidate for the job and you will not have my support. And that doesn't mean that I have personal feelings against you or that we cannot work together, it doesn't mean that I have disrespect for you, but I have to call it exactly as I see it and exactly as, as I have experienced it. One year ago, I came in here first meeting, open mind, open heart, and I watched these people tear each other apart during the vote. I watched you character assassinate Glenn, I watched you bully people. This is not the tone that we should be setting for our children. I'm here to work for the kids. We could have had this meeting on Zoom last week and been done with it and be already on to the next job, already in the work, but now we have to do this because it was organized the way that you wanted it. So I'm sorry, you're not the choice for the Chair and you won't have my support and, you know, I'm, I'm sure you'll win, we'll work together for the rest of the year, but it must be said and I've said it, so thank you.
Any other comment, discussion before vote? Member Martini.
I, uh, I also recall our organizational meeting from last year and I probably won't ever forget it because I honestly feel that everyone here suffered a moral injury from the way that, that people were treated during it and I've always kept in mind some feedback that we got from a constituent after that. This was an email in which one of our members of the City of Greenfield said, "I was frankly mortified when the content and tone of the discussion devolved into the petty and personal. I'm aware that there can often be internecine tensions on a board or committee, but it seems vital that these are handled in a way that is professional and dispassionate despite the underlying emotions we may experience, maintaining the tenor of a business meeting where the focus is on the issues and not the individuals." So George, if you're out there listening, thank you very much because I don't think that anybody could probably have put that better and I'm pretty sure that that would be the consensus in the city. I did make a statement of my own about what I would like to see in a school committee Chair. So not speaking about any particular person, these are the qualities that I would like to see in a Chair. Someone who objectively and robustly upholds the committee's main responsibilities to set district policy, fiduciary duty, and oversight of the superintendent. Someone who keeps the committee's focus ultimately on student outcomes and high standards of evidence-based practices. Someone who takes care of minor business efficiently and reserves the bulk of the committee's time for substantive discussion of decisions related to the district's values, priorities, and policies. Someone who demonstrates democratic principles, including maximizing the public's opportunities to participate, openness to respectful discussion and dissent, and ability to change one's mind upon further inputs rather than making predeterminations. Someone who creates a culture of respect, holding themselves and other committee members to a high standard of decorum, including respectful listening, calm responses, and civility. And lastly, on a practical level, I, I agree with what Member Ekstrom was saying earlier, the Chair needs to be someone who can devote significant time to the committee's professional development and cohesion, as well as researching information and resources pertinent to committee business and representing the committee to other government bodies and collegial networks. So those are my priorities, I hope that everyone is thinking about what their, what their priorities are, what they would like to see and will vote for the person they think most likely to emulate those qualities.
Any further discussion? Member Johnson Musad.
First of all, I'm very humbled and honored by the nomination, so thank you very much for that. And I think that, thinking about school committee, you have to think about who's the best person available for the job. We're all human beings, we all have jobs, we're all kind of learning and making it work in terms of being school committee members and I, I do think that I am the best person available for the job. One thing I noticed on our own self-evaluation of the school committee is that we scored ourselves very low on trust and respect and that was several months ago, we haven't seen any plans or initiatives yet to turn that around. I think I could do that. I think people who have been at meetings that I've facilitated have noticed fairness, respect for process, and not facilitating based on my own agenda, but based on the best interest of the students and the schools and following the, the agreements that we have made with each other about how we operate. So I think that I can do that for you, I do ask for your vote, I do appreciate, Member Prayety, all the work you've done as Chair, I know it, it has been an enormous amount of work and you did it through some very difficult times. I just think I happen to have the skillset that's needed to turn, turn that around, especially in terms of our respect and cooperation with each other.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move for a vote. All those in favor? I apologize. So we'll do a roll call vote, voting for Glenn Johnson Musad as Chair. Member Denis?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
No.
Member Wall?
No.
Member Prayety?
No.
Now we'll do a roll call for Member Prayety as Chair. Member Denis?
No.
Member Martini?
No.
Member Johnson Musad?
No.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Abstain.
Member Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Prayety?
Yes.
We have a tied vote. Is there any further discussion? We will continue to need to vote until a Chair is elected. Given that we have a tie, Member Denis?
I feel like this clearly illustrates why we should have had our reorganizational meeting prior to this on Zoom. I feel like it's playing out as expected. That's what I really have to say.
Is there any further discussion for Chair? Member Johnson Musad?
You mean to speak to who should be Chair? Because I feel like maybe the resolution is one of us who abstained needs to vote for one person at least.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I will do a roll call for a second vote. Any further discussion?
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
We've got 14 more times.
Oh, roll call for Member Johnson Musad. Member Denis?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
No.
Member Ekstrom?
No.
Member Wall?
No.
Member Prayety?
No.
Roll call vote for Member Prayety as Chair. Member Denis?
No.
Member Martini?
No.
Member Johnson Musad?
No.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Exstrom?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Praeti?
Yes.
At this time, we have a three-member yes, four-member Johnson Musad, four-members no. We have four Members yes for Member Praeti, three Members no. So Member Praeti is the chair.
Congratulations, Chair Praeti.
Thank you. And I thank you all for your honest feedback and comments. I don't want to say anything other than I work hard every day to make sure that I am doing exactly what we set out in terms of budget and policy priorities. And I'm used to people not liking my style, but I'm proud of the work that I've done, and I will continue to work hard on behalf of the Greenfield Public Schools because they mean a great deal to me. So at this point, we would move on to nominations for vice chair. Member Wall?
I'd like to nominate Member Martini.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Any further nominations for vice chair? How about discussion? Please, Member Exstrom.
I actually have given a fair amount of thought to this, and I made some notes, which I rarely do. And I wanted to speak on behalf of my second. Member Martini, you have been engaged in what is best for all students and employees of the district since, I'm going to have to deal with my glasses not, but since we have started and are very interested in student outcomes. And that is the core of what the school committee is about, is doing the best that we possibly can to provide the best education for our students. And your interest in data is important. And I have never, clearly in my short tenure-ish, I haven't seen someone as engaged in that as you have been. And that's not an easy task. And for all of the things that you were looking for in a chair are truly the rationale behind my thinking that you would be a great vice chair. And truth be told, there is going to be a change at the end of the year. Whether Jean or I run again or Amy and whether we're elected again or not, there does need to be another person who is knowledgeable of the way that the business side of the school committee that isn't conducted in front of everyone is completed. And I think that you would be really good at that as well. I think that you're thoughtful in the questions that you ask, and I think that you could be very successful in that position. And I speak for myself when I say I would, you know, having, I had, as I said before, I had the position for two years, and this is my sixth year on the school committee. I would be at your disposal for whatever it is that you need. And we don't have to agree, and you don't have to like what I have to say, but at the very least, you would have the history just because I have some weird memory of the history of the things that we've done and would be fully supportive of whatever is that you would need. And so that's my rationale.
Further discussion? Please, Member Denis.
I think you would make a wonderful vice chair, Member Martini, if you're willing to accept it. I think that you're exactly what we need. I think that I can say that it will change this committee drastically. And it will only do positive, wonderful things for the outcomes of the students. And I am absolutely here to support you.
Further discussion? Please, Member Johnson Musad?
I'm with Member Denis. I also am, and I'm Exstrom and Member Chair Praeti, that I think you'd be great, but I just would want some signal from you that you wanted the job before I voted you into it.
I wanted to give everyone else a chance to speak about it. First, Member Wall, that was unexpected. And other members, it's a good thing I'm wearing a mask tonight because your comments were extraordinarily gracious, and I appreciate all of your vote of confidence. And if it will be helpful to all of you, then I will happily step into that role.
Any further discussion? Any additional nominations for vice chair? We do still need to take a roll call vote, although I think you probably only need to get one vote. We're going to move to the vote. It is a roll call. Member Denis, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Member Martini? Member Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Member Exstrom?
Absolutely.
And Member Wall?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We will move on to nominations for secretary. Please, Member Wall?
I nominate Member Exstrom.
Is there a second? I will second that. And any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, any other nominations? I'm sorry, any other nominations for secretary? Okay, any discussion? Please, Member Denis.
I most definitely support Susan for secretary. I think that you've done a fine job. I would like to, though, hope that some things, such as the calendar that we need to have, like there's some things that need to be tightened up, which I know that you're aware of, and if you're amenable to that, I'm happy to give you my support.
Further discussion? I would just add that you said six years. I believe it's more than that, right? Because four years, and you're starting your-
My thoughts were two.
Oh, it was only two? All right, I'll give it to you.
This is my sixth.
I appreciate your dedication. Thank you for being willing to serve. Member Martini, please, go ahead.
Assuming that Member Exstrom would like to continue in the role, I just wanted to say that I liked what you said at our last meeting about your intentions in terms of trying to create a set of information for the committee about how we can move forward with the professional development that we have all agreed that we really need to do and be more organized about. And I look forward to your work on that.
Further discussion? Okay, so-
I accept the nomination.
Okay.
Because, yes, I have been thinking about the calendar and all that stuff and just can't do it because, you know, otherwise. At any rate.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, once again, it is a roll call vote. Member Denis, yes or no?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
I'm sorry, vice chair, Martini. Member Johnson Musad?
Abstain.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
Yes.
Member Exstrom?
I will abstain as well.
Member Wall?
Does that make-
Go ahead, that's fine. Member Wall. So we have yes. Martini, you abstained. You said yes.
I was yes.
Thank you. And Member Johnson Musad, you abstained. So we have two abstentions, and I did not vote yet. I'm also a yes, and five yeses. So that is Member Exstrom for secretary. And thank you and Member Martini for your willingness to serve. We do have our officers, and we can move into the remainder of the agenda. So the first, thank you, Counselor Ricketts. The first item is approval of the minutes from our December meeting, which was on the 14th. Again, I would take a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
That was Secretary Exstrom, and a second?
Second.
From Member Wall. And any discussion? I'm not hearing any. So we will move to a vote. Are there any abstentions from the minutes? Any no votes? So that passes unanimously. And we will now move into public comment. Susan Farber, do we have people for public comment?
Not anymore.
Okay, would anyone, like, this is anyone's opportunity. Anyone for public comment? Okay. We will next go to our student representatives, who have been waiting so patiently and just got a wonderful experience in democracy there. Please, take it away, guys.
To begin, we'll start with student council. The day before winter break, the student council collaborated with the athletic department and music department to put together a day of community bonding. There were pep rally games, dodgeball, ice skating, and musical performances by our band concert. January is a busy month for our council, where we will be hosting our first Cookies, Cocoa, and Cramin event on January 17th to prep for midterms. On January 18th, we will be hosting Music Bingo from 5:00 to 7:00 as a fundraiser to help offset the cost of our upcoming leadership conferences. January 27th, we will participate in the 11th Annual Special Olympics Spochi Tournament. We are still forming teams and participating with our unified teams.
Key Club, GHS Key Club ended 2022 with a food drive and help from the Greenfield Kiwanis to create 25 bags of non-perishable food, which helped out GHS families. We are continuing to work managing the Greenwave Essentials store. And always donations are welcome, and we will be helping with childcare at Four Corners School PTO Night. We will be hosting a fun basketball tournament to benefit Sandy Hook Promise and have begun planning for a Say Something, See Something, Say Something Week in March.
Athletics wants to wish a Happy New Year from the Greenwave Nation. Fall sports are hot and heavy. Check out Arbiter Live for this game schedules. Come and support our teams. We hope to see you there.
For Spectrum Club, we participated in a design-making workshop and learned about local programs from a visitor from Community Action last week. We are looking forward to coordinating with Diversity Club to attend and perhaps present at a mini-conference at GCC in March. And for French, French Club held their January meeting this week and planned future fundraisers and an ice skating social event for later in the month after midterms. They are now getting very excited for their trip to Quebec coming up soon in April.
Library Club is hosting their second book-to-movie night in the GHS auditorium on Friday, January 13th. We will be reading and watching the perks of being a wallflower. The movie will begin at 6:00 p.m., but we will have pizza and popcorn available at 5:30 p.m. This program is hosted in collaboration with the Greenfield Public Library and welcomes GHS families and community members. In the library, there have been numerous research projects and learning opportunities happening with visiting classes this year. Students have researched Renaissance artists and advanced European history, learned how to write depth-of-knowledge research questions in eighth grade, explored how to be online safely and responsibly in health, and practiced interview skills for future potential employment in the 12th grade English class.
For eighth grade, on Saturday, the 14th, the eighth-grade president, Project 351 Ambassador Caitlin Roberts, and eighth-grade class advisor, Ms. Bennett, will travel to other Western MA ambassadors, or with other Western Massachusetts ambassadors to Boston for the launch and service day. This day is in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Coretta Scott King and the celebration of the class of 2023. Project 351 is a youth service nonprofit organization that develops a rising generation of community-first leaders.
This Thursday, January 26th, the history department, or, sorry, not this Thursday, on Thursday, January 26th, the history department, in collaboration with Dial Self Youth and Community Services, will once again be hosting the Youth Engage with Legislators and Officials, or Yellow Conference, in which students have the opportunity to meet with elected leaders within our community and discuss issues relevant to them. You've all been invited to attend, and we hope that you all will.
Student Voice, as students return back from break, we are easing back into our typical schedules and have begun to readjust. We've also begun to prepare for midterms, which take place next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Students who have two and a half midterms for Wednesday and Thursday and two on Friday, leaving the opportunity for early dismissal should they have a parent note permitting it.
That covers everything. Thank you.
Thank you both. Are there any questions or discussion? Please, Member Denis.
Last month, when you came in December and gave your report, you mentioned that there is an issue with the bathrooms not being open to the students, and the superintendent suggested that it was a building issue and to talk to the principal. And I'm wondering, have you received satisfaction on that issue? Have you received any?
As of now, the issue still seems to be prevalent. Although there was, I believe, an email sent out in regards to a hope for some of those bathrooms to continue opening up, I have not noticed any change at the moment, and it seems that what we reported last month is still the case.
And is it affecting students' abilities to go to class? How is it affecting you?
It's generally affecting the amount of time that students are away from class. The longer the line is and the more limited their access to the restroom, the longer they are waiting to, one, be able to access those facilities, or the longer they're spending in line and in those transition periods. So it's generally preventing students from being in class quite as much.
I really appreciate you bringing student achievement issues like this to the table, even if maybe we're not supposed to hear them. Thank you.
Anything further for our student representatives from the committee? Okay, thank you both. See you in February. Okay, we'll move into the reports from the administration and start with ASKP, our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. We continued with another meeting today with the DESI High Quality Instructional Material Professional Learning Network. We are in the investigate and select arena for Greenfield High School's math curriculum. I encourage parents, though, there is a school council meeting tomorrow at the high school at 5:30, where I, along with Paula Brought, who is one of the assistant principals, and two of the team members who are involved in this process, will be presenting all of the information from our selection committee to all stakeholders. So if parents are interested in being part of that, they're welcome to join us at GHS tomorrow at 5:30. Professional Development, we're gearing up for another PD Day at the end of this month, on Friday, January 27th. We will continue to offer support in our implementation of the new ELA and math curriculums K through 7. We are also going to be offering specific content area workshops for other staff. Additionally, the special ed department will be holding another CPI training for some of our newly hired staff who have come on to district after the November training session. In library news, we are moving on to reading the materials at the Academy of Early Learning that just begun this week. And we are going to also be meeting with those teachers at the next faculty meeting next week to determine our next steps on what they would like to see for their collection and resources at the pre-K. In grants, our Title I, II, and IV, we're undergoing a six-year monitoring process evaluation currently. This process is a systematic examination of the district's administration and implementation of those grants. Our documentation is due to the federal government on January 20th. Once they receive all of our documentation, we then get a review and evaluation of our findings. Our civics grant, as Shane reported, the history department will be hosting the Yellow Conference. I've had the privilege of being a part of that. And if you've never had a chance to attend, I strongly encourage all committee members to at least attend if you don't actually want to be a part of that. If you don't actually want to be a participant, it is very engaging, and it is our students displaying all of their civic engagement skills at their finest. So I do encourage you to go and at least be a participant if you would like, but certainly go and watch. It's very interesting. We have some family engagement activities upcoming that Title One will be sponsoring. All of the elementary schools are doing a Bingo for Books Night on Wednesday, January eighteenth, from five thirty to six thirty in each of the elementary schools. Students and families are encouraged to attend. We promote literacy. We give away books and bookmarks. It's a very fun night. There will be cookies and cocoa. But I also strongly encourage any family who needs transportation to reach out to their school's principal. We have the ability to transport families to the elementary schools that their child attends if they do need help with that. And then, just to highlight and end on definitely some fun, positive, good news, Title One Interventionists in Reading and Math always encourage students to engage in learning over holiday breaks. We do challenges. They had a Bingo Reading and Math Challenge over the December break. Students were provided with different activities. They could participate on a bingo sheet. They could do one subject or participate in both subjects. We had great participation K through seven. Any student who participated and brought their bingo sheet back, they got a prize. And then they were all put into a raffle, and we gave away Greenfield Games for math items, or World Eye Bookshop for Book gift cards to students. You will see the winners of Federal Street Elementary highlighted in my report just because their excitement in the photo, I thought, was just contagious. So wanted to share that with you. And that is my report for this evening, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments for the Assistant Superintendent? Please, Mayor Weidergardner.
Just a comment. I participated in, since I've been mayor, I've participated in every Yellow event, and they are great. I'm glad to see, I think, this one, if I was, if I read the invitation that I received today correctly, is now again in person. Yeah, the first one I went to was in person. It was great. Luke was sort of the master of ceremonies, or whatever, whatever you want to call him. But he was great as well, and I'm looking forward to the next one. It is fun to participate. It really is. And they are extremely engaging. And as I said to my, to the City Council, I had an interview with a student at Charlemont Academy last month, right before I went to the City Council meeting, and I said, you know, you counselors can't hold a candle to a fifteen-year-old giving you hard questions. These fifteen-year-olds and fourteen-year-olds and whoever attends are no different from that. So it's good. Just be on your toes if you go.
Member Johnson Musad, please.
I guess I'll model a behavior that I hope our students have, which is asking questions even when you suspect it might be something you should already know. But what, can you remind me what Title One is?
Sure. It's a federal grant that we get that allows for us to provide intervention services to districts. You know, they base it on your low income and poverty levels, and those schools that have higher percentages have more investment. But we are a school-wide program, so every school in our district is eligible for Title One, and we do have reading and math interventionists at each of our elementaries, our middle and our high school. So really helping to support those skill gaps, and the funding allows us to do that.
And is that the same funding that allows for universal lunches at the, free lunches? Is that Title One as well? Or is that a separate stream?
The free lunches are separate. That's Title One. We can use it for supplemental literacy and math.
I see.
Support and materials related to that.
Got it.
Free lunches are separate.
Thank you.
The rationale for the free lunches is the same, though. Yeah? Yes, sorry.
It's based on the percentage of students eligible for free and reduced lunch. Yes.
Member Denise, please.
And there's free and reduced lunch at all the schools or at almost all the schools?
So there's two separate pieces. The free breakfast and lunch program that had been started during the pandemic continues, so all of our students get free breakfast and lunch. However, our current levels of eligibility for free and reduced lunch are that, are such that every school in our district would be eligible. We're just over sixty percent district-wide. So even Four Corners that previously had not been eligible is eligible at this point.
Wow.
Further questions for the Assistant Superintendent, please, Member Denise?
After Glenn asked that great question about what Title One was, it made me think. I was wondering, is there a key on the website that tells the parents what all of these titles stand for that we receive money from? No, might be.
We do have a Title One page, or we do.
We do have a Title One page. We actually have the first at meet and greet and at every open house and parent conference. They are provided with a Title One Family Guide. They are also provided with compacts, which explains what Title One is and how their student is eligible. But we also have a website link, and I've just updated it, and it is active and current, so anyone can find out more information. It is a link. It's Title One, and if you click on that, you can find out all the information on what we use it for. It also includes information on Title Two A and Title Four, and it also has my contact information if anyone has further questions.
You've got it all sewn up. Good. So then, in the spirit of asking questions, just to make sure that we all know, when you were talking about the professional development, just for the acronym challenged, which is definitely me, can you tell me what the CPI training stands for, just so that I know for some reason I do not recall what that acronym stands for?
It's Crisis Prevention and Intervention.
Okay.
That was harder than any other question.
I smelled the smoke coming out of your ears.
I think there's a P and an I, but I couldn't think of the C.
That is not what I would have just thought of in my head.
No. But that, just to share, that's verbal de-escalation, and then it does also train staff on ways to safely and appropriately physically intervene if students are physically involved in behavior.
Okay, thank you.
Always verbal de-escalation.
Thank you. And then, under the Title One Family Engagement Activities, which sounds like a fun thing, the transportation, is that something that's easy for the parents to access, that information online, or would they only be hearing about it here? I'm just wondering how you make that accessible to them.
Sure. All of the elementary principals included in a all-call, and they've also sent out a link to our Google Sheet where they could sign up, but they've also committed to reminding folks next week as well. They're going to follow up so that if there is a need for transportation. It's something that we're really committed to this year, so that any family who wants to participate in any activity is able to. We just had an event in November, I believe, at the middle school, and we did have families take us up on this opportunity, so we're really excited to be able to continue to offer that.
That's really great. Thank you so much.
Member Martini, Vice Chair Martini, go ahead.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I was going to ask for CPI to be spelled out for folks. And I wanted to also, also say thank you again for your continued work on high-quality instructional materials, because that couldn't be more crucial to the district. So I really appreciate that work. I just want to say that. I know previously I had inquired about what sort of steps might be taken next in terms of grades eight through twelve, since the focus of our new ELA curriculum is K through seven, and I think that's something that you were still working on. So I was wondering if there is any new information or forward movement about what we're doing for older students who will not have had the benefit of the evidence-based, high-quality curriculum that we are now using. So I wanted to ask you about that, and then I think I just have one more question after that.
Sure. Well, we are currently engaged for high school math, which will be exciting, although it won't launch until September, obviously. I did meet with the high school principal last week to talk about curriculum review cycles and what is at greatest need. We are looking at science as our next focal point, but we have a lot of work and a lot more discussions with the superintendent moving forward as to what's next for GHS and reviewing what materials need to be updated and what content areas we should focus on first. Our ELA is pretty solid, more standards-based, but more novel-based, so I'm not sure they will actually adopt a curriculum, per se. But with science being one of the content areas that is tested in MCAS at the high school level and is crucial to graduation requirements, we certainly want to focus on having high-quality, current materials for our students to access.
Thanks. And in regards to, actually, I lied. I'm sorry. I have two more questions. In regards to Title One, I wondered what sort of criteria you have to demonstrate to the federal government in order to be approved to continue that grant?
Title One's an entitlement grant, so we get the allocation based on our levels of free and reduced lunch. So we write the grant to support the programs, the academic needs that we believe we have. They need to programmatically approve, but it's what's considered an entitlement grant. So we don't have, it's not competition with other districts. We are given an allocation based on our levels of free and reduced lunch eligibility. The same is true with Title Two and Title Four.
Okay. I was just wondering about the documentation that is being, is due the twentieth.
Oh, you're referencing the six-year.
Purely about.
Audit.
Numbers.
No, I'm sorry. When you asked the criteria for continuing, we don't have to meet criteria to continue getting the funds. But based on your follow-up question, you were more asking about the audit that Karen referenced.
Yes, thank you for that.
Oh, that's okay. That's, that will go back her way.
There are certain parameters in which you can use all three title grant funds for. So part of the audit is just showing over the course of the last six years what we have devoted those funds to, what programs we have used them for, what support in professional development and teacher improvement we've put them towards, and what roles of equity and how we've made things equitable for our students across the district. So a lot of it is just crossing Ts and dotting Is so that they see, really highlighting what we've done and how those funds actually help our students show growth, improvement, you know, achievement, so.
Thank you. That's what I was getting at. My last question, I know that you had said here that once all of this documentation has been submitted and reviewed, then the district will receive a report of the evaluation and finding. So I was just wondering, when do you expect that report usually? And will it be provided and/or reviewed with the school committee?
It's funny. I thought of you, and I actually emailed the grant over administrator, because I said, I know she's going to ask. And I said, Kate's going to wonder when that report will come. The best I could get out of the grant administrator was fall, probably, late October, possibly November, so the findings would come out then, and then they would issue the report. If we have to do anything because there's something that they see in our findings they would like us to tweak or upgrade or improve, they give you an opportunity of time to do that, and then the report would get delayed. So it's just a matter of who's reviewing what when, and it probably won't be till right before Christmas, maybe.
Okay, so I'm assuming we can hear from you about that then, when it rolls around.
When it rolls around.
Government gets around to do something. Thank you.
You're all set. Any further discussion, questions for ASKP? All right, so we'll move into, thank you. We'll move into the Superintendent's Report, and I will be right back.
Okay, so I first am sharing that Joel, our IT Director, has gone back to corporate employment. So we were pleased with the work that occurred during the brief time that he was with us, but we wish him well, thank him for the time that he was here. I have reposted the position. We do have some applicants starting to come in, so once a reasonable time has passed for us to get a number of applicants, we will look to schedule interviews for that position. In the meantime, Mike Sivinis, our network engineer, has begrudgingly agreed to act as our interim director. So I do appreciate Mike's willingness to do that, but he has made it quite clear he does not want the permanent position, so we are actively searching for a new director. We also have posted for the Director of Early Childhood, the new position that you folks approved at the last meeting. We are getting applicants in for that as well. That position is not necessary until next year. If we are able to find a qualified applicant who's able to begin prior, then we would bring them on board so that there can be a good transition with Mrs. Putnam, and that new person can assist with some of the special education work that currently exists at the preschool, but right now we are still in the application review process. The re-envisioning our school facilities, the next staff meeting is scheduled. I incorrectly put the seventeenth. It's actually the eighteenth, which is next Wednesday, but given I thought today was the tenth, it makes sense that I put the seventeenth. So that will be with our elementary and preschool staff, and we will review the document that's available online, which is a summary of the options that were presented by NESDEC and the pros and cons and questions that came out of the community meetings. So I will review that with our elementary staff. We did meet with secondary staff, who did raise some good questions, and we're continuing to investigate that. And Jake Waldsmith, our Transportation Coordinator, has worked on options for transportation, so I need to review all of that with him, and then I'll be able to share that with the subcommittee from the school committee about the redistricting options. And then we'll, when we have all the answers we believe are needed, we'll share that out with you folks. Strategic planning, the surveys are going to go out tomorrow in my parent update. We had the last meeting in December, and Dr. Who will shared a draft of the survey with all the members present at the time. There were some suggestions made, and she's looked to incorporate as many of those as possible. We will share the survey out in my update. It will be on the school website, and the Communications Director for the city is also going to share it out on the city website. So members of the community and parents and school committee members, please look for that, because we are hoping for a good response rate on that survey. FY24 budget planning has begun. I have sent some suggested dates to the current subcommittee members for the budget so that we can begin review. Andy, Karen, and I are starting our department head budget meetings. We take that information based on what information staff has provided to their building or department administrators. We compile that, add it into the first draft of what will become the Superintendent's Budget, and we, I am suggesting that we look to hold the public hearing on the budget and the presentation to you folks on March second. March ninth is the last day that you are able to vote on the budget for this budget cycle, but given ongoing conversations about funding, I think it's prudent for us to resolve some of those issues so that we're clear on what revenue options are available. But we are working, and hopefully the members of the budget subcommittee can check their calendars so that we get a few of those meetings in. So I had a request at the last meeting to look at some data sets. So I had a request at the last meeting to look at some data sets from the district. In the packet, you have the October 1st reports from last year and this year, so that is a basic attendance report that I know I have a copy of here as well. It gives the breakdown of, there we go, student enrollment by grade level, by gender, it outlines our ELL population, other special populations such as military families, students in special education, and, yeah, it's a little bit toward the back, sorry, and it's very small, very small font, but, so, you can see at the top, the date, October 21, October 22, you can see there is a decline in our enrollment, not, I think that we, you know, need to be mindful of the fact that the projection in our enrollment is for a decline over the next For this year, we did have 30 students opt out with school choice into other districts, but we had nine that were our students, moved out of the city but opted to request school choice seats that were still open to remain in the district. We did have some other students who were not able to remain with us because there were no school choice seats open in those grade levels. When looking at the numbers of students who transferred out, there are a fairly large number of students who, whose families moved out of the city of Greenfield and actually out of Massachusetts completely. One data set that I shared with you folks at some point last year was the trend of school choice, vocational school enrollment, much more specific numbers about where our kids are. That report will be able to be updated, but that data set comes out in January, so the report is not available yet, but I'd be happy to update and get it out to you as soon as it's available. So, the other piece that, that I included, I think it was Vice Chair Martini asked about discipline data, so what I did was took the opportunity to compare discipline incident reports for Greenfield Middle School and High School, I had shared that would be a data set that we would use as one benchmark around what impact the yonder pouches potentially were having at those two schools, so it seemed relevant to kind of do two things at once. So you'll see a table that I provided, the data on this table is relevant only from September 1st through December 30th of last year, and December, September 1st through December 30th of this year, so comparing same timeframes. So, the reason some of those specific titles are there are because those are the specific incident types that I noted in the goal that I had set around the yonder pouches, so I'm reporting those separately from total incidents. So you can see that at this point, actually as of December 30th, 2021, Greenfield High School had a total of 682 incidents logged, and this year during that same timeframe, it is less than half at 320. That is any behavioral write-up that is, is sent, it doesn't speak to significance or level of, of behavior, just want to make that clear. Skipping class through December 30th of last year, there were 251 logged incidents, this year there are 108, and incidents of tardy to class last year at this time, there were 115 logged incidents, and this year to this point, there are 67. So, I think administratively, we would agree that our schools are in different places for a variety of reasons, but I'm extremely pleased with seeing that these incident counts are in half. Greenfield Middle School, the same, last year at this time, there were 399 incidents logged at the middle school, this year, same timeframe, 93, so huge decrease in disciplinary write-ups. The data sets that I had noted for the middle school was disorderly conduct, last year there were 116, to this point, same point this year, 19. Insubordination, last year at this point, 78 write-ups, this year, 48, so again, huge difference. In looking at the elementary level, it was, it's a little bit different to talk about any type of discipline write-up, because what they really look at is reportable incidents to the state. The vast majority of incidents that occur at our elementary schools are dealt with in a developmental way, and we use our reset rooms, we use buddy teachers, we use conferencing with students and families, so it is approached in a much more teaching style instead of more of the disciplinary, so really what we would be looking at is incidents reportable to the state, and they're, they were minimal to nonexistent last year and continue to be. So, middle school, high school is really where, you know, bulk of student behavior is, so I hope this, you, you had given a global request, so I hope this is helpful information. The other piece I want to share is that I will provide updated attendance. I was out of the office several days last week, and unfortunately, our database manager is out for bereavement, and she has the ability to manipulate the reports out of Power School for attendance. It is a skillset that I do not possess in any masterful way, and I felt it would be more of a disservice to the community and the committee for me to give you whatever nonsense I would be pulling out of Power School, so it really is best for you to get good information next time when she's back and able to pull it. But hopefully at that point, we'll also have the update of the chart, which is more specific about where our students have, have gone to in terms of vocational schools and all of that. So that, that's it, period.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments from the committee, please? Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
On your staffing piece?
Yes.
This may be an impossible question to answer, because I do see that you're saying you continue to interview.
We do.
And you have hired some people as well.
We have.
Can you give us an idea of where you're at? Are you halfway through?
Oh, no.
Are you filling positions?
We are filling.
More positions than you're not filling?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The piece where we're continuing to have vacancies that are, that we really, they're having an impact, is our psychologists, speech pathologists, our BCBA. We are very fortunate that we've had a number of applicants come in who are taking positions as our instructional assistants, substitute teachers, administrative assistant substitutes. Karen and I actually interviewed an applicant, see, this is one of the benefits, I believe, of Karen and I interviewing applicants first, is that we had an applicant come in as an instructional assistant applicant, and as we went through the interview, we discovered that she actually had the qualifications to be a long-term art substitute teacher. So, you know, we were able to fill that position, and she may not have interviewed in that building had we been continuing with our previous format, so that was a wonderful opportunity that came up. So, we are finalizing our staffing, updating our current staff lists, including the vacancies as we go into the budget meetings with principals, but we have filled more, and Karen and I have more interviews this week, and as a matter of fact, in the last week, we've gotten about five additional applicants for substitute teachers. So, things are moving along nicely, it's those small pocket of professional positions, our psychologists, speech path, and BCBA primarily, that are having an impact.
And I wanted to talk about the enrollment figures as well.
Sure.
The overall number we are down is 158 students.
That's what it looks like.
We should be very, all be very concerned about that. There was a lot of talk earlier about student outcomes, and I applaud everybody who really is working hard on that, because I do believe that you are, but we have a problem with the fact that I think a lot of citizens don't think we are, because they're looking for better student outcomes and a better environment in other places.
Well, if I could clarify, many students have moved out of state.
I, I get that, yeah.
Right, so that, I just would like to be clear.
I do understand that, but our, our charter school went up 15 students, and our choice sending is up 65 students, that's the deeper level of the data, and that has, overall, 158 students down has implications for state funding that we will receive, plus, I think that speaks to people unfortunately voting with their feet on the district, so I, I think we all need to double down in how best to improve our school district, and the more we do it together, the better we'll be.
I think one thing that is positive at this stage is that we are a whole harmless district in terms of Chapter 70 funding.
Yeah.
So right now, the enrollment will not have that impact on Chapter 70, so the state holds us at the same level of funding, so, but I do agree, I think that the more we continue to talk about the wonderful things that are happening in the Greenfield schools and the wonderful staff and students, such, you know, when you hear the things that our student reps talk about, that Karen and I talk about, the positive, the previous beliefs about the schools will change, because there are a lot of wonderful things and wonderful staff in this, in this district.
It is true. I do think, though, statistically, it takes approximately five years to get students back that have left, so some of those are not coming back, depending on what grade level they're in.
Absolutely.
Again, I, I just think we need to be mindful of the impact of 158 students leaving the district.
I saw member Denise first, and then we'll go down Vice Chair Martini, and then member Johnson Musa.
Thank you, Mayor Rita Gardner, for bringing that up. I feel like a broken record because I've been saying that so many times since I started out here, and it's sad to say that almost everyone I know is no longer in the district, but despite all the positive things, sometimes it's important to talk about what's going wrong in order to show that we're working on it and fixing it, so I hope that we can continue to keep those dialogues open and be mindful of that, as you said. This is really fascinating, and I'm really glad that you brought this discipline update to us, and maybe this is presumptuous of me, but could you maybe continue it throughout the year? Could we have these updates periodically? Because it's really fascinating data, and it will be great to have this data when we talk about yonder pouches again in the future for renewal and such things, so I'm wondering if that's something that you would be willing to bring to us later on in the year?
I can, I would.
You don't want to add anything to your plate?
Well, I would propose maybe quarterly.
Yes, quarterly, I'm not saying every month, but it would be great if you could show this to us in the spring, and then maybe before summer, that would be wonderful, because this is really great data.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I, I agree that it is great to have the data, I would be caught more cautious about interpreting it, because correlation is not causation, as my much frustrated old statistics professor managed to get through my head at one point, and, and I think we have to just acknowledge that the previous school year, especially that September to December period, was the transition back to normal school, post-school closure, so I, my hypothesis would be that that has a lot more to do with these numbers than any other factor, but I do think it is, it's really helpful in seeing where we are, and is a good foundation for talking about what other initiatives and ideas might be additional contributing factors to bringing these numbers down further, and making our school environment feel safe and welcoming and comfortable, and a place where a student can focus and concentrate and learn. We heard a lot from students and parents about this, especially last year, but, you know, also some I know this year, so, and I think that probably has a lot to do with choices that people make about where they're sending their children. So, I would be interested to hear about what additional initiatives and ideas are kind of coming next, I know that there is the social-emotional curriculum process that you've talked about before, but I, I would like to, to see more than that in terms of what's coming down the road. And, and then, I did have a couple of questions about strategic planning, and I think that this might be helpful in contending with the concerns that the mayor was talking about, because we really do have to get as good a sense as we can of the thoughts and feelings of the families in the district. I would love to have the thoughts and feelings of families who are no longer in the district too, but when it comes to this survey that's going out to families in the community, is it just quantitative in that it has questions with a choice of answers, or is it also qualitative in giving people the opportunity to give you a narrative answer to something? What does it look like?
So, the survey going out is primarily quantitative, because that will allow, we're hoping for significant volume, and that will allow the results to be analyzed better. However, on the survey, there is a question asking people if they would be willing to be part of a focus group or an interview, so that more narrative data can be gathered, so it's, it's a mix of both.
Okay, and when we've tried to get information about community experiences or views before, like, for example, through survey, the listening sessions that were held previously and the survey associated with them, what have you, there was very low participation.
Right.
And, so, I'm a little bit concerned that if we go about sending out another survey in a similar way, that we'll have the same problem, and please, nobody get mad at me for asking a, a money-related question, I hate to propose an additional expense, but like, what would it cost to send this thing by mail and see if we would get more of a response from families?
We actually, during the last strategic planning session, we actually talked about that we'd be able to utilize district staff to call families, including some of our translators to be able to call families, potentially go over the survey by phone, our staff to be able to call families who we don't know that they've responded to requests that they do go on and take it, so we're looking to utilize somewhat of a personal contact to try to facilitate a greater response.
That sounds like a great idea, and I'm assuming kind of low-hanging fruit would also be to make a couple of district-wide calls, like local calls and text reminders for those who are on that system.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely. Like I said, it's going to be communicated out a variety of ways, including on the city's site, city social media, our communications out, it's going to be communicated about many times prior to the closing of the survey.
Listen up, respond.
It's also going out on our website and on the city's site in our, translated into our primary languages for folks, and my update goes out translated as well, so even our families who are not primarily English-speaking will have the ability to access the survey. So even our families who are not primarily English-speaking will have the ability to access the survey.
Okay. And just to add one little nuance to all of those great comprehensive thoughts. There are families in the district where, who have, do not have a parent who is literate. And I am hoping that the, we'll be able to directly reach out to those people and make this accessible to them too.
I think that will come through the outreach. So certainly you, you know, many people who struggle with literacy aren't vocal about that. So I assume we will have some personal contact with families who may not be able to engage in the survey.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
And my last thing is not a question, but another data request. I know previously, when we were discussing the progress of the district and student outcomes, and you gave us a nice presentation about MCAS data this past fall. We had also talked about having a further presentation later that includes more comprehensive data from other district assessments that we use. For example, MAP and DIBLES and other forms of assessment that the, that the district uses. I feel like it would give us a more nuanced understanding of our progress rather than just the blunt instrument of MCAS. And I know it's kind of, I don't know, there's probably not an easy way to do that.
We can, we can definitely do it. I guess I'm contemplating when you say measuring our progress. I don't want to say we're not making progress and that we won't see that. But I think, you know, when I reflect on your comment about the discipline data being reflective of last year being the transition year, I completely agree. And please know, I did not say, nor do I believe that yonder pouches in and of themselves are the cause of a decrease. I do believe from subjective comment from staff that they are a positive impact. However, there are a lot of factors that are different this year than were last year. But I also put that same caution out when we look at the academics, because last year was a transition year. So as we compare our data, I almost look at, you know, this year is more of the first typical year. But we definitely can provide data. Karen and I will work together on what assessments have been done. So one thing that's challenging is Joel had started working with us on a data collection tool. And he has indicated his willingness to continue, even though he's left, to continue supporting us. But one of the things Karen and I will be looking at is sort of a data collection program for us that's going to serve our needs going forward. So it's just an.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it's just an extra piece. There are many, many moving parts, as you know. But absolutely, we can do a data update with additional data sets.
Thank you so much for this, and I also have questions about the discipline update data. I was wondering, do we have the same data for 2019, 2020, for that same period before the pandemic hit?
I, I assume so. I did not dive to that. I, I would assume.
If we do have it, I'd love to see it, and maybe, maybe that would be more helpful comparison. But I'm glad to hear that the, the subjective experience of yonder is positive, and it's great to see these numbers. So congratulations to you and to everyone, the, the staff, the faculty, and the students for making those changes.
Absolutely.
I also was wondering, is there comparable data from other districts? I don't know if that is aggregated anywhere, but.
So the data that I believe would be readily available related to other districts would be only discipline that is required, that's described as reportable data. There's a specific set of discipline that is required to be reported to the department. So that, I believe, would be able to be queried. But that, these numbers reflect reportable incidents and others. So it wouldn't really be apples to apples, but.
Well, it is, it is challenging. I was, you know, the person who was proposing when we instituted the yonder that we have some, you know, method of evaluating it. But I think what it really shows is it's, you know, we're not, we're not equipped to do that kind of social science to that, that degree where we could really say, oh, it was the yonder pouches that made the difference. But I do appreciate the effort and the sharing of information, so thank you for that.
I think there's so many positive changes that have occurred in a variety of contexts, including our new curriculum resources, having, you know, having our coaches, again, lesser of them, but still having coaching, having some of our special ed programs that have been changed and updated somewhat. There's just so many global pieces that I believe cumulatively are having an impact on, and we're another year out, a little bit more typical of schools. So I think all of that combined and the extremely hard work of all of our staff and the work of our students in dealing with all those changes. It's a lot, but they're, they're doing a fantastic job. Can I add one more thing to my update? I apologize.
Please, go ahead.
I got a flyer today to look at for publishing around the district, but I figured I would share it. On January twenty-fifth, from nine to noon, there was a flu and COVID vaccine, COVID nineteen vaccine clinic at the Greenfield Health Department on Sanderson Street. And mass residents who get a COVID vaccine can receive a seventy-five-dollar gift card while supplies last. So this will be on our district website. Mayor, I assume it's on the city's site or, okay. Yep, so I'll be.
Seventy-five dollars could be spent, however.
It doesn't say.
When, when we got booster, when my family got boosters at the one at Newton School on December twentieth, they were stop and shop. Yeah, we didn't know ahead of time, though, they, yeah.
I was told by a member of the city staff that they went to the mall just to do something else, but they were doing a booster clinic and a seventy-five-dollar gift cards were more harder.
I don't know. It's a surprise, I guess. But I wanted to share that, and that will be included in the update tomorrow when published as well.
And where's the funding coming from for the?
It generally is coming from the state. So certainly for the vaccinations, I don't know about cards. I assume it's coming from the state as well.
Ear mic's not on.
I thought I was speaking loud. I don't know. The funding is coming from the state. The gift cards, I can't be so sure. But I think that, I think that's part of the incentive. It's part of a federal, if I'm not mistaken, it's part of a federal grant that districts, areas that have had a low vaccination rate, which I'm not of the opinion that Greenfield is one of them, but, but maybe there is something that I'm not aware of. Tend to have the opportunity to have those gift cards available as an incentive.
Further questions or comments for the superintendent? Member Denise, go ahead.
It's getting late for me, so I'm hoping my brain keeps up with this. But thanks, Glenn, for giving kudos out to the staff and students. I didn't even think about that. That's such a good thing to say. Last year, I think in February or March, I remember asking you if it was possible to survey the parents. It's a really important issue for me, and I remember you saying that there wasn't a way to do that. And that really stuck with me. So I'm both taking a deep breath and feeling stressed about that because that stayed with me for a very long time and caused me consternation, and also being incredibly thrilled that now you can survey the parents. So I don't know what has changed, but I think it's wonderful. But my question is, several parents have asked me, and I just remembered I meant to ask you before when it was my turn, on the re-envisioning our school facilities, is there a way to get the information about the options and the NESDEC in primary languages, in other primary languages?
Sure. Is there a particular?
I don't know, but several parents specifically told me that they needed it in Spanish. And so I made a note to follow up with you and see if that was available, because maybe it's available and they just can't access it.
I believe it's already on the website.
Okay.
If you could.
It was a month or so ago, so I just found it in my notes to ask you. So if it's been rectified since then, then this is a moot point.
There are reports, I believe it's my summary that I created, you may remember that from the meetings. I believe my summary document has been translated into our primary languages and is on the website.
Okay, so if you're out there and you remember asking me about this, go forth and find it and make sure that it's in Spanish if you need it, or whatever other language you require.
Yeah, I'm quite sure, because we had had a request from one of the sites where we did our neighborhood meetings to have them provided in Spanish, and we did do that.
Okay, great. So I'm done with my following up then.
Further questions or comments about the superintendent's report? I just have a couple of things, mainly because the mayor kind of jogged my outrage around school choice, which has been implemented in Massachusetts for about twenty years now. There is no worse policy in this state for our school district than school choice. And I don't ever hear anyone talking anymore about getting rid of school choice. It pits especially rural districts against each other, and it goes in cycles. So we will have down years, and then Gil Montague will have down years, and Pioneer, and it just goes around and around and around and around and around. I would add to that, we should be attuned to what is happening in our neighboring regional districts, specifically Mohawk, Pioneer, and Gil Montague. Pioneer and Gil Montague are planning to merge. That will impact us. People don't like change. Maybe that will impact us in a positive way. I don't know. But I do think it's really important that we are understanding the demographic changes that are happening in our districts and try to understand a little bit about why with those. And I do sometimes joke with the superintendent about becoming a regional district by just surprising Lydon and invading or something. And I'm joking, I'm entirely joking. But we need to, I think, occasionally think about where we are and how, how other districts around us are doing and, and what we can, what we can do differently to either support each other or collaborate, whatever that may look like. The, the other piece that I was reminded of is I was so excited in February of 2020 to see a draft letter about the tech schools that the mayors were going to send. And if you don't know, our tech school is bursting at the seams, has a waitlist, and is often taking students who are really college-bound students, which is never the intent or the mission of tech schools. That is probably the biggest problem that our district faces in terms of students who live here and could be Greenfield students. And I do hope that anything that is done, that anyone at this table hears about, or anyone listening to us at home hears about, to have an initiative to look at, what are we doing with our tech schools and why are we doing it? And how can we get back to those schools actually serving the students they're intended to serve? I would be all for us helping, supporting that type of initiative, or at least discussing how we might do that, and if that's consistent with our, our policies and our priorities. And then the final thing I would say is, none of this is a surprise. The census data, since I believe nineteen ninety, maybe earlier, has said Greenfield's population will decline indefinitely, indefinitely. There are no projections for our population to increase. It did at the last sentence, census, what was it, like two hundred and three people we got or something like that, was around there. And the NESDEC study additionally told us the same thing. Our enrollment is projected to decline indefinitely. So we need to do what we can do to serve the, our students in, in the geographic area to the best of our ability and be willing to be creative and innovative about how we do that.
Could I address the tech?
Please.
In, in wondering about the one hundred and fifty-eight students, we did check with the tech school. And actually, the tech school enrollment from Greenfield this year was down fairly significantly, in the double digits. So they didn't go to the tech school, they went elsewhere. And some of them, I mean, those who went somewhere.
And that's just one year, though. Did you look at?
No, no, we were only concerned about whether or not so many, how many students went to the tech school.
I'm glad to hear that. I, member Denise, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I just had a, yeah, I just had a question for you, actually, Chair Poirier. I was wondering if you had any plans for how to collaborate with other districts and other district school committees, or if that was something that was on your radar at all?
I don't have a roadmap for any of that. I'm not an expert in any of it. I read the news about what's happening in other districts. I talk to the folks that I know that work in other districts. I talk to parents about school choice. But I do not have that plan. I don't know that I have that expertise. And I don't know, I don't know necessarily where we get that, so I would look to the superintendent, look to our school committee members, look to the mayor, to see how we might best do that. I don't, I don't have an agenda or plans. I just am very conscious of the fact that we sit here going, oh my God, what are we going to do about school choice? How about not have school choice? I grew up in New York. It is, people in New York think it is ludicrous that we allow people to send their kids to a different school. It makes your schools better if you're forced to educate the people that are there and not allow them to choice out. That, to me, is the biggest problem with our enrollment, is that we have allowed this to go on for two decades. But I don't have a plan. I just have a gripe at this point.
Well, maybe if they have another Division Five meeting for MASC, I went down to the one in North Hampton. It was so illuminating and special, and there were so many chairs from so many districts there, from so many school committees there. Maybe that's something that you can attend. Maybe we could, some of us could go when they have another one. I have no idea when that will be, but when we get those emails, maybe we can collaborate in that way.
I'm open to suggestions. I'm open to seeing what we think makes sense as a body. I definitely would not take on anything myself as representing us as chair without the body saying, yes, this is what we would want to do. It makes sense for us to spend our time at this meeting or, you know, putting together something. And I am very conscious of the fact that we, we pay experts who know a lot more about the, how districts run and how students move and what students need than us as a school committee. I think we should be looking at our strategic plan and our facilities and making sure we have priorities that allow for us to take advantage of opportunity, collaborative opportunities or support for other districts or support for our students in different or innovative ways that we maybe haven't thought of. But I don't, I, I, I don't want to overstep and say that we should do this when I'm not the expert. Our experts are, are superintendent and assistant superintendent and our business manager. And we want to be mindful of collaborating also on that side to do what makes sense. But our job as a school committee, as I see it, is that we set policy priorities, that we use our strategic planning process to create a, a, a way to move forward and hopefully impact this in a positive way.
I have a question. Is, is the term "choiced out" the same as "unenrolled"? And, and I ask because we have people who, in discussion, will say that they've choiced their child out, when the reality is they've enrolled them into a private school, like Eagle Brook or NMH or DA. I mean, we have a plethora of wonderful private schools. And it's a very different animal from public school. So in, in my head, that isn't, I mean, that, that, that isn't a choice out. That's a, that's an unenrolling and enrolling in a private school.
Right. School choice is the, it's a specific program, and the, there's an application process, a lottery generally in districts, and it's a very specific process. Anybody can choose to apply or.
Anybody can choose to apply or enroll in a, in a private school without, you know, it's separate from school choice.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Martini, please.
So I feel like I am making a confession, but I have used school choice for both my children within this district. And the reason for that is because, as you all well know by now, literacy is an incredibly important issue, specifically for my family, and the way people in my family learn to read. And maybe I'm the only person this side of the Mississippi who does this sort of thing, but I don't think so. In choosing a school for my children, I did what a lot of other people do. I, I, maybe they don't, but I imagine they do, which is to look at all available information about the schools within our reach. And that includes things like our school report card, the data that's available about our district and other districts. And I went beyond that by calling directly every school in the wide area, public, private and in between, to find out what curriculum they were using and how they were teaching children to read. And, and I ended up at Newton School because it just so happened that there was a building administrator there who was very visionary about making sure the evidence-based practices were in place. And I, and, and I think one of the most powerful things Greenfield has done to attract students to our district is the, the work that has been done and is being done to obtain and implement high-quality instructional materials. And I actually don't necessarily agree about the available private schools around for those who are available, able to afford them, being better or being wonderful in that department either, because they, many of them are making the same mistakes that this district and many other districts have made in that specific area. And a lot of students have been failed there, too. So I, I appreciate what member Denise said as well about the need to show that we acknowledge problems and have plans to deal with them and also are open to collaboration in, in dealing with them. Those are, those are things that are encouraging to meet. And so I can only speak for myself, you know, and, and my, the way I make choices about where I send my kids to school. But I, you know, I firmly believe that, you know, Greenfield is the right place right now. And, and not because of focus on all the positives, although I do appreciate them and, and the superintendent and assistant superintendent and our student representatives do a great job of bringing those to people's attention, but because of the, the substantive improvement that the district has made and the dedication to improving instructional practices. So I will get off my soapbox now and that's all.
Member Johnson, go ahead.
Chair Poirotti, I really appreciate your concern about school choice and the way that it has drifted off of our radar. I think we just got discouraged because it became a, a losing battle. And I, I just kind of want to speak to the fact that the decisions that are made on the policy level or at the school committee level are different from the choices that parents need to make for their children. And so there are a lot of, one of the things that this policy does is it, in fact, puts many parents who care about local, good, well-funded, public education in a terrible spot because they may believe in local, public education and then have to make choices about choicing their students out. And then, of course, that choice and that research is a, a privilege that, that some parents have and that many parents don't. And so it also kind of takes people who may be advocates for public education or different curriculums, puts them in shopping mode to go look at other school districts rather than having them come to these meetings and demand that the curriculum change. So I, I think that we, we need to get our minds out of feeling discouraged or overwhelmed because this policy, which hasn't made sense, has been in place for so long and think about what we can do to get it back on the agenda of our legislators and change the law.
Thank you. Thank you all for the good discussion. Is there more, any further questions or comments? Did you know you were going to get all this with your update?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent DeBarge. We will move on to the next part of the agenda, which is the school committee reports. I just want to do a couple of things as not really a chair's report, just a couple of, of housecleaning things. I did not prepare, assuming that I would be elected chair, anything related to subcommittee assignments for this year. And I, I had talked earlier today with the superintendent because she is trying to make a schedule for budget meetings. And at this point, my plan would be to bring it to the February meeting, but I also, in looking back at agendas from January's previous, noticed that just about every January, we have a need for a special school committee meeting. If we don't, we will address subcommittees in February and they would stay the same at this point. And if we have a special meeting, I'll bring it to a special meeting. And if I get feedback from the committee that they feel strongly that they want subcommittee assignments right now, we can schedule a, a special meeting for next week or the week after. But I, I kind of prefer just the wait and see and to stay with what we have so far for, from, from 2022. And then, you know, it was obvious during the election of officers that there are some concerns from members of, of the school committee currently about how the policy does work for our elections. So the process would be, if you want it to operate a certain way, to bring that suggestion to the policy subcommittee to make a change to the policy. And I encourage anyone to do that. Policies should be dynamic and they should work for the body. And that is my chair's report. And let's do subcommittees. I don't, policy, I don't think, do you have an update? Glenn, it's fine if you do. You, okay. I didn't think you got, that we'd met. And then budget, Christine kind of covered already.
Oh, hold on a minute.
Please.
Do you mind? Christine reached out, or the superintendent reached out to me today to talk about budget committee and I said, well, I don't know what's going to happen, but knowing what the process has been in the past, I think it would be acceptable to send out, to start scheduling meetings and things like that. So that, you both probably received invitations to meetings, as did I. And the reason you received that is that she had spoken with me and said, okay. And, and basically I said to her, look, we need to work with your schedule and, on your timeline and the city's timeline. So if there are meetings that need to occur, so that we can do the work that we need to do to be able to assist her and her work, then she should reach out to us and just pick dates that work for her and we'll work around that. So that would be why you got, why you received the invitations. And that's all?
So that's budget, policy. We've kind of covered redistricting. We've kind of covered strategic planning. I talked in December, just real quickly, about what we're doing on planning and construction, where I represent the school committee. We are touring the buildings, the, the city and looking at how space is utilized. And it's depressing. And we toured Sanderson Street yesterday. And it's this, it's the same thread of there's so much need for storage and so much wasted space because of storage and potential fire hazards and document damage and all kinds of other things that I think will likely give some initiatives to, or some directives to the city to address of, on a long, with a long-term plan for storage and whatnot. But that, I, I will give a, a more in-depth report from planning and construction once we finish that, that process of looking at all the buildings. We've only done two. And I think that's all those subcommittees. Did I miss anything? Collaborative, did you have anything?
They met and they voted on officers. They had their reorganization meeting and then that's been that. So we'll see.
Thank you.
Next month, maybe.
Did I miss anything? All right. Budget update.
So you have your budget reports. You will see that there is a positive balance in the local. Mayor Andy said I should make sure you see that. We have reclassed funds, expenses into Circuit Breaker, which is why the local has a positive balance, but... Okay. Well, there's always change, you know, the budget moves every day, absolutely, yep. There's still going to be another charge of tuitions toward Circuit Breaker. So our budget, budgeted amount was just over 1.3 million and we're, we're there. So anything that folks see as revenue in Circuit Breaker is accounted for as a revenue in the FY23 budget, meaning that money is accounted for as spent. So school choice, the DESI has done an update. We are projected to receive just under $300,000, but we had budgeted just over $400,000. So that reduces the funds available through school choice by about 117,000. However, we are using more grant funds with our ESR grants than we had budgeted for. So that should be an offset of that decrease in revenue from our budgeted amount. And then there was a follow-up from transportation. There was a projected deficit that was in the local budget of about 500,000. And we are using 389, just, just under 390,000 from special ed tuition revolving. Our transportation folks do the bulk, if not 100% of our special education, special transportation. And then 112,000 from the transportation revolving. So those two revenue sources will offset the projected deficit in the local for transportation.
Budget questions or comments? Secretary Exter.
So as we're moving the funds around, what I'm hearing you say is that we've had to spend more than we anticipated. Eventually, these things are going to come back to us and we're going to have to, we won't be able to rob Peter to pay Paul.
Well, we spent, we're utilizing more grant funds.
Right.
Than we had anticipated when we created the FY23 budget.
Right.
So the reduction in revenue through school choice is something that we're able to offset.
Right. And our intention is to build that back up.
Well, and again, that currently, we are using, and I, I believe you all remember when Andy shared last meeting, that best practice is to have a year's worth of revenue in reserve for school choice, for Circuit Breaker. Right now, we're using current year's revenue for current year's expenses for Circuit Breaker, for preschool tuition account and for Circuit Breaker. So we do not have reserves for any of those.
And just as a reminder for, for those who don't get as interested in budget stuff as I do, Circuit Breaker is something that is used to reimburse special education.
High-cost special education programming, yes.
And it's reimbursed at 70%.
So it is reimbursed, you're, you're taxing my minutia. Once you hit a threshold of, I believe it is still four times foundation. So the state sets a foundation amount for students in Greenfield. Once our program costs four times that amount, then we are eligible for reimbursement at a percentage of that difference. So for an easy mathematical example, if our foundational amount is 10,000, we first have to spend 40,000. And then if we spend 45,000 on a student's program, we're eligible to submit for reimbursement for the 5,000. And the percentage has been around that. That can move because it's determined through the budget cycle. So it, it's around that.
Right.
One thing that's noticeable with the election of a new governor is that the governor has an extended timeframe to do her budget. So that will mean that we are not necessarily on the same timeframe in terms of getting our Chapter 70, our Circuit Breaker. There was discussion about the state using pothole money to help districts account for the 13%, 14% increase in approved Chapter 76 school tuitions, which for us is about a half a million dollars. So all those funding sources potentially will be delayed while the new governor does her budget, so.
And would it be safe to say that what we paid for services last year has increased quite a bit this year, so that when we're being reimbursed for last year's rate, this year, it's not going to cover the, the, the same, I'll say, amount of services, just because I, off the top of my head, can't think of a...
Well, I can't speak to that because every year, our special ed department has to submit a Circuit Breaker claim form.
Right.
And so that, that can change depending on students who are in district, out of district, have particular levels of service. And some of the out-of-district schools are, are more expensive than others.
Sure.
And so depending on a student's need and placement spots that are available, that, that could fluctuate.
Right.
So it's, it's something that we anticipate based on prior submissions.
See if I can make it. So student A went to school C last year.
Mm-hmm.
And student A is now going to school C this year. Is it reasonable to believe that their tuition to attend school C has increased?
I, yes, but because Chapter 766 school tuitions have to be approved.
Right.
The last increase, I believe, was 2%, so fairly minimal increase, which is part of the rationale of why they were increased so dramatically now.
Yeah.
So again, we'll have to see what reimbursement percentage Circuit Breaker comes in at. We'll have to see if the pothole funds are available. We'll have to see if the Hold Harmless funds, if there is an increase in the additional per pupil amount that we get, being a district under held harmless. And we'll have to see what the legislators do in terms of the Student Opportunity Act funding. So all of that's still pending.
But Circuit Breaker, by no means is sort of a windfall of, yes, we are getting all this money that has nowhere to go.
No, no, no.
We are getting funds that are already allocated and the likelihood that they would be unallocated is non-existent.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You are due two more Circuit Breaker payments, though, this year.
I will believe you. I don't know that detail out of my, on the top of my head.
You get a third quarter and a fourth quarter of about the same amount. It's about equal each time.
And that, but that's based on last year's expenses.
Yeah.
Further discussion questions about the budget? Okay. Thank you for that. We'll move on. The superintendent goals. Attempt number 15 will commence now. So you have a document that looks like this. It's not as easy to read as we all would like. Hopefully people have had a chance. It wasn't readable at all in December, so we've improved. Hopefully people have had a chance to look at it before just now. This is, again, what, the evaluation. This is, again, what the evaluation for the academic year of the superintendent is based on. Christine, I wonder if you could just kind of walk us through an overview of what you're thinking.
What I'm doing, sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So the... Sorry, I'm getting to be hard-pressed to think well this evening. So the... There are particular domains and indicators that we look at, that you folks have seen in the superintendent's evaluation. So I identified goals under the four different focus areas, which is instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and then professional culture. And under each of those, I set some benchmarks toward reaching some specific steps that would help, what I believe, to be reaching those goals. And included next to them, to the left of them, the indicator that they represent. So under instructional leadership, it would really be given that as a district leader, obviously, I am not interfacing with our students on a daily basis, providing direct instruction. So my goals are around supporting and moving the work of our administrative team, their professional development focus areas. So that's what you'll see about providing feedback and support for the administrators and then also using data to inform instruction. So those are all related, using our district and school-based data, student-level data to work with the leadership to... You know, theoretically, we change the focus at each school and have areas identified for improvement. And if we focus our efforts and our work and our professional development time on those, then the goal is to see improvement, obviously. Management and operations is related to safety and security and changes at the facility levels. And then also the use of collaboration time, which we were able to build into the schedule at the elementary level. And so now all three levels of our schools have collaboration time. And then a piece which may be, may have just become a smidge more challenging to establish and initiate a technology replacement plan. But we will muddle through while we look for the tech director. Family and community engagement. So this is, keeping in mind from my perspective, district-level ways to engage. So it is using a variety of communication tools to share information with families and the community, to facilitate communication about our re-envisioning our school facilities process, and then to collaborate with the mayor and city council on capital, which has already started. And then professional culture is related to professional development regarding instructional leadership teams. We're working with the Department of Education, our SSOS. Something Systems of Support. Help me. Thank you. Statewide Systems of Support. And that is support that the district gets because federal street school and the middle school have status due to their performance data. And then also to provide and participate in administrative professional development about our equity work and trauma-informed care.
Thank you. Before we have discussion, I would ask for a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for '22, '23 as presented.
So move.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion or questions? Go ahead, Member Johnson Musad.
I remember that when we did our superintendent evaluation, we were pretty universal in complaining about the tool that we used. But it seems that the objectives line up with what was in that tool. So can you explain why that is?
Well, one, we don't have a different tool. So when I needed to create these, I needed a frame of reference. The other piece is that I think through collaboration and conversation with other superintendents and then conversations with Amy is that at worst, we have different ways to utilize the tool that exists. So... But I need something to link my work to and pick why I'm picking what I'm picking. So that structure at least provides some direction. So if at the end of the day, we agree that we're going to use a different tool, I will erase the indicators. I still think regardless of whether we use that tool at the end or not, I still think that this, you know, these goals will be impactful, so.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? I saw Vice Chair Martini first and then Member Denise.
No, Vice Chair Martini, go first because I bet you're going to ask the question that I'm going to ask and then I'll already get answered.
I was kind of thinking the same thing that Member Johnson Musad had just brought up, which was when we were using this tool previously, I'm pretty sure we had a universal agreement that it was a terrible, terrible tool and we all hated it. And I know that something had to be put together, so we had to use what was at hand, and that's fine. But I guess I would have liked to, not necessarily by the superintendent, I think it's the committee's job. I would have liked to have been able to examine other options for tools and then select one and then do the goals. So I would like that to be on our docket, that we do that. Because I really appreciate that the objectives and priorities that you selected here obviously and clearly reflect values that have been evidenced in these meetings. There's obviously an effort here to align this, you know, as well as possible with what's important to the school committee and the community. So I like them insofar as I can, you know, with this tool. But I just wanted to say that I really do think we should make that an item, that we examine other tools and really vet them and pick one that works.
I don't disagree. I think, again, there are ways that, you know, we could... I think having dealt with it, the nicest way to say it, the first year, we could deal with it a little less painfully if we need to the second year. And I do appreciate your desire to have something that's more user-friendly. But it is a tool that we would have to agree on together. That's something that is an agreement between myself and the committee, that we would agree on a tool. But I think there's probably got to be something less... I don't know what. Yucky. Yucky, yeah. I went with the technical term of yucky, but yes. So... But in the meantime, at least, it is very clear that I recognize work that needs to occur in the district. And you folks have been talking about the same work for the past, you know, year and a half that I've been here. So I don't think there is a philosophical split in terms of the priorities. So, you know, in that regard, at least, we'll be all rowing in the same direction.
Further questions, comments, discussion?
See, I'm glad I let you go first because you asked all the questions Stiles can ask. But I wanted to, I wanted to just add. So when we do find this new evaluation instrument and vote on it and decide that we're all growing together in this way, are you going to be able, or do you feel confident? Maybe I should put it this way. Do you feel confident in the goals that you've chosen, that you'll be able to make them even more targeted and precise and enter them into the new instrument? Or do you feel like you'll have to scrap them entirely?
I can't tell who you're talking to. Who are you talking to?
I'm talking to Dr. DeBarge.
I'm sorry?
I was talking to Dr. DeBarge.
Okay. No, these are my goals for the year. And there is evidence that will be provided to the committee that shows the variety of ways that I believe I'm meeting them. So the work of the superintendent at the district level is not going to be that micro. I have to have a broad impact because of my role. So there's... I do not anticipate making these any more specific, but there will be evidence that is specific.
Okay.
But across a wide variety of ways to show... I'm not being very communicative right now.
What you're saying makes total sense. And I may not have phrased it correctly. I guess I'm thinking in my mind of last year's goals and for some reason, they feel like they were more like targeted. And so I'm just thinking like, maybe that was because I did see them with the evidence. And so maybe I'm looking at this and going, you know, increase the use of best practices seems really like, we should just standardly, just live like that. You know?
I understand what, I think I understand what you're saying, so.
It's late and my brain isn't working, so.
No, that's okay.
We're mind melding at this moment.
Last year's goals were extremely... They were much more operational, I'll say. These are more leadership-based, where I am looking to influence the process and protocol and professional development so that changes that are put into place have a broader impact. So when we looked at last year's, it was evaluate the current curriculum. That is a very clear, finite process. So that's easy to say. Yes, that is a very clear thing. But then, once we have evaluated the curriculum, now we have to do work on it. And I... The work of identifying and implementing best practice is going to look somewhat different at each potential grade level, each building. What a high school may identify as best practice and identify as having the most instructional impact will be different than what a kindergarten would do. So I can't be so micro as to say it will be the use of a Venn diagram graphic organizer, that level of minutia. So the work is really that we're starting to have staff identify what has been effective and narrow that scope down, implement it consistently. And then we will look at student performance data to see if, in fact, it is an effective practice. So it's creating that cycle and looking to identify practices that can be expected and implemented across that grade band.
I really appreciate that perfect explanation because having been in these meetings for a year, I've learned that your style is to really take it down to the micro level. And so I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, this is kind of broad.
I know the micro, but that's not the goal level.
Now I understand what you're saying and that makes sense. So this is, this is good. I really appreciate your thoughtful and thorough explanation.
Sure.
At this very late hour.
Secretary Exer.
I wouldn't discount your second point, though, of having seen it after it's done and being able to look at it like, oh, okay. Because it's... I find it to be the same thing, you know? As long as I've been, I'd look at these like, well, that seems a little bit esoteric and out there. And then when it comes back, oh, yeah, okay, that does relate to that and now I can make that connection. So I wouldn't discount that in your thinking by any means.
No, you're right. And I, as soon as she said it, I was thinking, oh, yeah, that's right. We're going to have all these other things that are coming. Because it is a giant elephant that plods along.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
So what is the timeline? These are your goals for this year, but meaning ending June 30th, ending when?
Well, I did start them.
You have started.
At the start of the year. So, yeah, I'd be looking to do the summative for the end of the academic year. I mean, unless we agree that they'll continue, given their broader nature. I mean, we could always, you may remember when Dr. Hul did the overview, we could agree that in June, it is an interim assessment. And then June of '24 would be the summative. We could do that as well. I'm not sure that these will have been one and done by June.
Right. If we wanted to look at a new evaluation instrument and have new goals based on the new instrument and have that be for the coming year, that'd mean a lot of work between now and June 30th. Maybe we're, could we look at, you know, having these be your goals through December 31, 2023? And then, I don't know what timelines look like in terms of doing this work that people seem interested in doing.
I think it would make sense if we agreed that these were either through June of '23 or June of '24. But I certainly am not opposed to having them be, you know, two-year goals, especially if there will be a change in the tool that we use midway. You know, that might be something that makes sense.
Just seems like we're either going to fully take this on as a committee, that we're going to look at different tools and get them on board and get them online by June? Or we're gonna, we're gonna say, let's make these two-year goals and have it continue through June of 2024?
I don't object to either option.
Did you want to amend the motion or you just kind of...
No, I don't really know what...
I don't know either.
I'll say, I'll say I don't have the bandwidth to try to lead an effort or do a tremendous amount of work between now and June to make that happen, so.
Yep.
May I suggest these be two-year goals then? And we'll do an interim in June of '23 and then a summative in June of '24?
So I would make a friendly amendment to the motion on the table currently to change the goals' timeline to be for 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 academic years. Would that be acceptable to whoever made the motion? I don't remember.
With an interim evaluation at this June?
Okay. So an evaluation period that has two feedback points?
Yes.
Is what you're saying? Yes, okay. Is that a friendly amendment that's amenable to the maker of the motion? You were the maker of the motion, that's why you're chiming in. I wondered why you were talking. Did I say that out loud? And who seconded the motion was Exer? And are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. And Susan Farber, do you have what you need?
What specifically do you want to include, if anything, in addition to with an interim evaluation in June 2022?
2023.
Thank you. I've been writing checks correctly this week. So it now reads to approve the superintendent's goals for 2022, 2023, and 2023, 24 academic years with an interim evaluation in June 2023.
That, I think, is the spirit of the motion. Do you all agree? Yes? Further questions or discussion? I saw the mayor and then Vice Chair Martini.
Is the assumption that we will also, during that timeframe, hopefully sooner rather than later, begin to look at a new tool?
Yes. I have... Member Johnson Musad used the term bandwidth. I think that's apt to describe the first problem with actually looking for a new tool. And then the second problem is that what I have seen so far is just modifications of the tool that we hate.
Oh, okay.
So my preference would be that I would actually spend some time myself creating a form that would incorporate what we need to evaluate and having our own form, get feedback from the committee and approve it to use on our own. We do not have guidelines from the state for what we have to use, only that we have to do something. And, you know, I will say overall, my, my goal as a committee member is always to show improvement year over year. I believe we went three years without successfully doing a superintendent evaluation. So improvement would, we've already made improvement that we have goals that we're about to vote on. We're looking at having a tool that we like and we're going to keep moving forward. And I think that feels, that feels good.
I can vote tonight to support the revision of the goals for the two years and what... I can vote tonight to support the revision of the goals for the two years and whatnot. But I guess I would like us to have a discussion as a full committee about how we want to proceed with developing a new evaluation instrument and, and all of that. I, I'm not, I'll just put it out there. I'm not a fan of really any one of us just going and trying to develop something on our own.
Not, not, I mean, nothing is going to be done in isolation.
I know you would bring it back here, but I'm just saying, you said you would take a stab at essentially.
And bring it here.
Drafting a new one and bring it back here. And I just, I don't, I actually don't think that's the best approach. So I'd like us to have a chance, not tonight, because I think it's not actually on the agenda and it's actually kind of getting late. But I'd like us to have a chance to deliberate together about how we want that work to proceed, the development of the new evaluation.
Sure, do you want it to be on the agenda for February?
I think that would be great.
Great, done. Further discussion before we vote? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Martini, go ahead.
It's small, I promise. There's just, it's kind of a long commitment to make to a tool that sings. And I'm okay with doing that because we kind of have to. But I really hate the term best practices because it's so vague and it's so easily just sort of used by everyone for everything. And I, I think it would be helpful, like in other kind of documents like this, where you see a definition of terms, like this is what I mean when I say this, you know? Could we, could we get that at some point?
A definition of which terms? Tell me what you're talking about.
Could we, when, when we say something like increase the use of best practices? Well, what does that mean? What does best practices mean in that, to you, in that context? I, I need to understand that in order to have an opinion about whether that has occurred or not. It's part of why this tool is terrible. But if we're going to use it, I would like to like have a mutual understanding of what the terms used in it mean.
Well, in this regard, I think, specific to the term best practice, you know, that is an industry term. It is an educational phrase that, that is used and has meaning to educators generally. I think I did somewhat define that when I was answering Elizabeth's question. But if you want me to define more what I'm referencing, I would appreciate if you would, you could just email me and identify which terms specifically you're speaking to so that I don't feel the need to go through the entire goal document and define everything to death. So if you would just hit the highlights of what you think you and I may not have a common understanding on, I would be happy to do that.
No problem, thank you.
Further questions or discussion? So we're ready to vote. And, okay, so anyone abstaining from voting on the goals? Anyone, a no vote? Okay, so that passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you for the good work to make that happen. And we are on to the vote about enrollment at Commonwealth Virtual Schools. And this is something that does come up annually, and it makes my head hurt. And I'm going to try to explain, there's a, there's a memo that almost made my eyes bleed. But basically, the state says, eh, you, we have this limit of how many, what percentage of your students can go to the two Commonwealth Virtual Schools? And you need to basically vote and tell us if you want it to be above that limit.
Cap that, cap that, the limit.
See, this is why.
Your eyes are bleeding.
Yeah, thank you.
Right now, Greenfield does not cap the number of students from our district that can enroll in virtual schools. There are two supported through the Commonwealth. You can see them on the cover page of the memo. So it is the prerogative of the committee to cap that at 2% if you so choose. We currently have 1.29% of our population enrolled in the Commonwealth. So that's 19 students over both schools. So, you know, I think this is timely, given the conversation about enrollment. And we do have the opportunity to cap.
And if we put a cap in place, it does not impact that 1.29 that is already out?
No, they continue. It just would prohibit additional enrollments past that percentage.
And is it up to 2% or is it?
It. Hold, please. I believe we can vote to cap at 2%. But let me look at the form unless you have it in the top of your head. I'm just looking, they give us a little form letter that we would have to fill out and send back. We can cap. Any district that's, that it has enrollment that exceeds 1% of the total enrollment in its district can vote to restrict enrollment to the 2% cap. And students currently enrolled, I apologize, it looks like it's 1%. Read that.
It says that the, if you don't specify a percentage cap, the department will set it at 1%.
At 1%.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, this apparently makes my eyes bleed as well.
It's very hard to understand. I've had a hard time every year understanding it. So we can try to do a motion before we discuss further. And what I might suggest, and of course, I'm open to any modification, I move we restrict the enrollment of Greenfield Public School students in the Commonwealth Virtual School at X percent. So someone can make a motion and decide what that percent might be. For example, 1.5. If anyone wants to make a motion, feel free.
Are we, I'm sorry, just a question. Are we already at almost 2%? What are, what percentage are we at right now?
1.29.
1.29, okay. And you said there are 29 students?
19.
19 students, okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying.
It's okay.
Because this also made my eyes bleed.
It's very hard to understand.
1.29%, 19 students currently. Is this something that gets a lot of interest every year? Just curious, like, do, do families ask about it a lot? Does it?
No, not.
I'm just curious for a little backstory on this because I don't know a lot about it.
Yeah, the, you know, virtual education has increased since the pandemic. I think a lot of, you know, more students accessed that during that time. But it's 19 students and they're not all brand-new enrollees into the virtual schools.
All right, so that's good to know, thank you.
Yes.
Member Johnson Musa?
I'd like to make the motion that you mentioned chair replacing X with 1.29%.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Let's talk about it.
Yeah. My immediate reaction, you could see, it doesn't give us any wiggle room. If anyone else wants to do it, we have a cap. That's, our students who have already, are already doing it.
Right.
That's the point, yeah. That's why I made that.
That's the point you're intending.
I'm saying, let's not, we're, we're, we're saying we don't like.
Does anyone here, Susan Hollins? Every student should be able to go where they want to go.
She's also the person who started it.
We, you folks can vote to set a cap at any percentage, provided it is not less than 1% of the school district's total enrollment.
I'd like to speak to my motion.
Please.
Just, we're saying we're not in favor of school choice. This is, in essence, a different type of school choice program where we have the option to limit it and not allow any more students to opt out of our wonderful school district and go and invest resources in something else that we may not have confidence in. And we don't have the same type of public representation like we do here on the school committee. So that's why I made the motion. Students can stay here and enjoy our wonderful offerings.
Vice Chair Martini and then Member Danieff.
I think even if the committee voted to restrict it at 1%, it does not look as if it would affect any of the students that are currently enrolled in it. So the committee could choose to do that in an effort to keep more students in district and without being unfair to anyone who is already, has already chosen to do one of the virtual schools. It says here that to, that no student shall be compelled to withdraw as a result of the vote. Because the vote to restrict enrollment cannot require any student to withdraw, such vote similarly does not limit tuition for students already enrolled. And in the next paragraph, it doesn't necessarily say that the virtual schools could not choose to enroll a new student who... God, this is confusing. It looks as if they could choose to enroll a new student anyway over the cap, but they wouldn't get the tuition. Is that, is that how that works?
That's what I read, that's what I read.
Okay. Okay, so my, I think that vote to restrict enrollment at 1.29% doesn't necessarily make sense to me. If the goal is to have students stay here, I think we might as well vote to restrict it at 1% because it wouldn't affect any of the students that are currently enrolled. And, and that would only affect our, you know, potential future enrollment.
Are you making a friendly amendment to the motion, or trying to make a friendly amendment to the motion?
I would accept.
And the second, Extrum?
Sure.
Okay, so Susan Farber, 1.29 goes down to 1%. Okay, further discussion or questions? Member Danieff, go ahead.
The students that are enrolled in the virtual school, can you tell me a little bit about these types of students? Because some of these students might need that virtual school. And I'm gonna take myself into this, the position of a parent who might have a child that needs that. And if they're not able to access it, and I have heard that there's a waitlist and that there are many kids, so I think we need that data. Is there a waitlist? Because I have heard that there's quite a long one. And I'd like to stop and think about how difficult it would be for parents who find themselves in the situation of needing the virtual school and not being able to access it or having to have the inability to access it affect their employment or?
We, not to interrupt, but in the interest of time, we have until March 1st to make our vote.
Okay, all right. So then I would just really like to discuss it further and not make decision now. How is that? Can we, is this, is this something that we can move into the future?
The only thing I can tell you is that I have no personal knowledge of the circumstance of any students that are currently enrolled from Greenfield. So I have, when you were asking about the, you know, information about students, I have no information about the families.
Okay, because I've had a lot of experience talking to one of the people who work for that school on several Zoom calls. And I think that it's a really great program, and I would like to stop and gather some data on that and maybe even have it be open for parents of these children to come and make public comment. I think it's important that we take a little bit of time and get more information on this before we vote to cap something that may have a waiting list where people really need to access the service.
Do you know that there's a waiting list for sure?
I have heard from several parents that there is.
The memo implies that it's hardly any students statewide that go to these schools.
Maybe we could do a little research.
What are you asking for in terms of research? I think we need to understand what you're expecting in terms of data and, and moving forward.
Guess what I'm asking, okay, I guess what I'm asking is, can we make this decision at the next meeting? If we have until March 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
But what I asked, if you could clarify, what are you expecting us to bring back to the committee in terms of data?
I guess I'm not expecting anything in particular. I just think that maybe, because it's such a difficult document and I didn't realize that we have until March 1st, maybe now that we've sort of had a chance to discuss what the document is saying, maybe a little bit more time will give us in the public a chance to think on it a little bit more. I'm, I'm not prepared to vote on it tonight.
I saw Secretary Extrum and then Vice Chair Martini.
I'm just curious, what is it set at now?
Yeah, 1,200 and 3,000.
No, what's, did we vote a cap last year and what is it?
No, we, the Greenfield schools do not currently have any restriction.
That's what I was, thank you.
We have taken this up, in my recollection, in '21 and also in '22 and did not set a cap. That is my recollection, without looking at minutes to verify that that's the case.
And if we don't set a cap, it'll be set by the state at 1%.
Correct. So in terms of moving forward, it sounds like there's some interest in perhaps rescinding the motion? Tabling the motion gets messy.
Well, I think you can make, and I guess I really request this. If folks, if folks wish to continue an item that's on the agenda as vote to restrict enrollment in Commonwealth Virtual Schools, that the motion is to lay the motion, lay the motion on the table until the next month. And then we could.
Is that what you would like to do?
No, I would like, if someone wishes to table the discussion, I wish that they would make, make a formal motion. We can discuss whether or not to do that together and then return to the initial motion.
No one is offering any additional information. Are you ready to vote? Either we make a motion to put it on the table or we vote.
I'd make a motion to put it on the table if that's necessary. Would that move it to the next meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and further discussion on that motion?
In terms of additional information?
No, if you want to table it or not. We're talking about tabling it till next month.
Well, it pertains to the reason why I would like to table it.
Okay.
I would like to know how many of the current students who are enrolled in virtual schools are graduating or anticipated to be leaving and therefore how much room there would be?
Our students.
Yes, of our students. And, and I would also like to know from the superintendent what you think the pros and cons would be of restricting enrollment or not.
From the Greenfield Public Schools superintendent seat, I see pros in terms of giving incentive for our students to attend here. I'd also like to note that you read in the document that the virtual school can still enroll a student, they just would not get funding that is otherwise going to come to us. So it's, that would be a decision the virtual school would need to make. It would not prohibit anyone from applying to it. But I can check grade levels.
Further discussion on tabling the motion? Okay, so we'll move to a vote to table. Anyone abstaining from voting on this? Anyone opposed to tabling it? I have one opposition to tabling. So everyone else, just show of hands, you want to table it? Okay, so we will move the, we will table it and we will bring it up again in February. Thank you. And the next two items are donation items. And I would be interested in a motion to do them as a consent. Would anyone like to make that motion to do the donations as a consent agenda item?
So moved.
Second, okay? So we've got two donations. And I would entertain a motion that the school committee accept the donation of musical instruments from the Jensen family and accept the donation of gift cards and branded items from J.B. Hunt Transport specifically for the winner of their contest, Miss Schedule, and her kindergarten class at Four Corners School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Stay with me, people, we're almost there. And a second.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion of these, other than how wonderful?
How wonderful.
Thank you.
Fabulous.
Thank you all. Thank you, Jensen family, thank you, J.B. Hunt. Very.
Thank you, Genison family, thank you, J.B. Hunt, very, very generous. And are we ready to vote? Anyone abstaining? Anyone voting no? That passes with one, we'll say, we'll say, Member, or Vice Chair Martini is an abstention because she's not currently at her seat.
Okay, and now we will move to October 1 enrollment numbers?
No, we did that.
We did it, that's why, I'm like, why is it, okay. We did the discipline and attendance idea, those, both of those items were part of the superintendent's report. Now we have requests for new agenda items. Member Denis.
I'm sorry, don't mean to make the meeting longer, but I was wanting to ask if we could have added to our Google Drive, that is so helpful, by the way, wonderful to have all of the documents in the Google Drive. Would the chair be interested in creating a year-long agenda that would just hold sort of placeholders and benchmarks of particular things of interest, like the budget, superintendent evaluation, just so that we can have sort of a long-range view to look at it, maybe one that syncs with your calendar, so that we can sort of prepare in our minds, our own research and planning, so we know when things are coming up?
That's actually.
Not minutia, but benchmarks.
Secretary Extrum, please.
Yeah, that's the intent of that calendar that I was talking about, would include all of those timelines, just, and, you know, and I can set them so that they'll repeat annually on whatever date, so that it lives beyond me being here, at the very least.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, it'll be helpful.
Do we want to, as a committee, make an expectation that there is some draft of this calendar for our February meeting to visit? Otherwise, we'll never get it done. The officers can work on it. Or do we want to say by March? Do we want to, want to say by March?
I mean, I can do a loose something, I would think.
Let's try to do a loose something by February and see where we get. Is that helpful?
Yes, thank you, I just read that that's one of the Massey best practices that we should be doing, so.
Oh, don't say best practice. You're sitting right next to where you're gonna say best practices.
It slipped out.
I'm fighting words over there.
Point made.
I just think, it can be a living document, it doesn't have to be perfect, we can keep improving it as time goes on.
Right, right, it would be dynamic.
Yeah, my hope is that Massey's calendar that we all received is also electronic, and I can just get, that I can have their feed go directly into our calendar.
I was thinking the same thing when I opened that calendar, I was like,
That's what I'm hoping for.
Oh, it's here, but.
Yeah.
It's not digital.
Exactly, that's what I'm hoping for.
All right.
You can dream.
Do we have other requests for agenda items for future meetings? I'm not hearing any, and I would like to move on to vote to enter into executive session. I would like a motion to enter executive session for exemption reason number two, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and also exemption reason number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of a, any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, which is approval of executive session minutes from December 14, 2022. The committee will not return to open session. Do I have a motion to open the executive session?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And we do have to take a roll call vote, correct, for this?
Yeah.
It's amazing, I can't remember by the time we get to the end of the meeting, what the process is for executive session.
Well, we have to close, we have to close the public.
Yes, that I remember, so roll call vote, please.
Member Denis?
Yes.
Secretary Extrum, yes. Member Johnson Musa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiroti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We already got her.
Yes.
Okay, and then a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
Member, Member Denis?
We don't have to do a roll call for this.
Oh, we don't?
No. To adjourn public session? No. I need a motion and a second. Motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Done, done.
Anyone, yeah, anyone abstaining, anyone saying no, we vote unanimously. We are adjourned as of 8:54.